May this act be noted as a 2020 meeting date and published in the Eastern Express House and 190 Democrat on February 17th, 2022 and posted on the vote board at the Capitol. Action may now be taken. Please join me for the flag.
The citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic, with which we stand, one nation, under one law, the municipal, where we bring justice for all.
Before we get started, I would just like to ask for a moment of silence. We lost Mr. Chad Hoffman this week. Eighty-six years old, he's a lifelong resident of Hybridge, married to his wife for sixty-two years. He was the donator of the C.K. Hoffman Veterans Memorial Park that we all love and are, um, will take very good care of. And he was also named the first honorary Main Street historian by the HDBA. So if you can just have a moment of silence for this great loss of work. Thank you. Roll call.
Ferry.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Strange.
Here.
And Lee.
Here. Just briefly before we get started, you may have noticed our honorary guest at the end is Ms. Diana Ramos from Montclair State University. She is interested in working in government someday, oddly enough. And she's been working with our green team on a diversity on boards of committee action item. And she's here to observe, so thank you. May I get a motion to dispense with the rating of the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regular minute?
Move.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regular minute.
Move.
Set it.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
On to public comments, three minutes per person. It is called through the Borough Council that all public comments on an issue shall be limited to three minutes per person. Comments may be made on any subject pertaining to borough issues. Comments pertaining to public hearings should be saved for that section of the agenda. Each person may make, excuse me, each person may speak once during a public comment section. No debating between residents. Comments should be addressed to Mayor and Council at the public comment. Okay, no comments?
Okay. On the consent agenda, sorry, salary award from Salty Goods. Um, I was looking at the, um, documents, funding documents, and the consent agenda has the environmental commission for this building for the term of yard sale. That is awesome. And I'd love if there's going to be a seed exchange down there. And recycling is, I mean, it's just cool, very cool. So thank everybody who, you know, making that vote there. Um, also, I read the details on the, uh, the fundraising platform. That also sounds awesome. So, also, thank you.
Uh, thanks to Pia, who I just learned about that seed exchange idea today. It is, it's a good one, so. Thanks, Pia. She's, she's our green team chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other public comments?
I want to, uh, welcome the Hybridge Voice Scout Group 149, four here who served working for the public.
Slap. Welcome. No public comments, okay. Uh, ordinance, on to public hearings. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, amend Chapter 145 cannabis retail business. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who's on them?
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think I, look, we've kind of talked about this a lot over six, nine months now. Uh, this is to allow cannabis retail business in the business zone of Hybridge only. We set forth some guidelines for when and if we do get an application that we can make sure the proposed organization here is true. Uh, we've been along the way a few times. And I think what we have on the agenda is pretty ready to go.
And just to make note that in case people don't understand, the brackets are things to remove and the underlines are things to add, if that's what you're looking at. But the amendment, I would want to suggest in the future that we actually cross out, line out the names that are going to be deleted as opposed to bracketed. For me, it's very difficult to tell what's going to be removed or what's going to be added.
And I would just like, can I ask Darlene, our, uh,
Yep.
a question?
We have Darlene Green here, our Borough Planner. Can you help walk us through this?
I need you to help me understand. Um, when we were on the Zoom, the conference called U Penn back with some experts.
The town hall?
Yes, the town hall. And I was taking notes.
Okay.
And.
I don't know, I don't think Darlene was on that call, though, just.
Alright, well, anyhow. I don't, I don't know who said it, because I didn't write down who said it. But they were telling us that you can put in here something called a sensitive area and that you can say so many feet from the schools that we've already talked about. But my concern was Commons Park. And it's one of the things, and this is parks, and like. And I, my concern is just that corner where you come into the Commons.
And the house.
There's the house. And I just think the entrance into that, I would like to mark as a sensitive area. And I don't understand why I can't do that.
So the, uh, folks in Trenton have given us a lot of flexibility in this particular land use designation. It is meat from many other land use designations and you can find very strict restrictions and limitations on it. And so some towns have set proximities or radii around certain places like schools, or trinkets, daycares, public parks. And so these pilots have wide latitude to regulate where these places go. So if the borough wants to, it can limit the proximity of a dispensary to a public park. The only problem is depending on how large that radii would be, our DB zone is immediately adjacent to Commons. So it would depend on how many feet would you want to punt a radius around the Commons to prove that use. So it's, it's, it is something that you can do.
It's not just like a linear thing from the entrance over. No, you're talking about a circle area.
It's a buffer zone and give them distance from a property lot. So we go out around whatever, yeah, the town.
So there's so many key, oh, our park, our park.
Well, I mean, that, that would be suggested. You take the, whatever shape property is and you have a certain distance out around it, that, you know, that's the zone you're creating. I don't know if we can say the entrance and have a zone around, I don't know.
See, that's what I want, just do the entrance there.
Or identify a post from the ground.
I mean, I don't know, does anyone else feel that way?
I think the question, the question is how large is the only looking to create around that area? Um, because there's not going to be a dispensary, um, you know, on, in that area itself. So the question is, are you looking to create a buffer around that entrance? And so, how wide?
It's wide as that house.
Well, I think. Well, we're talking about that.
And that's all I want, right there in that little corner.
Entranceway specifically, the planning board. Darlene, do you recall, like, the details?
We covered a lot of ground that night. Um, so it is possible that it wasn't mentioned. I don't know what the width of that lot is off the top of my head, but it's not a very wide lot.
But it goes back along our Commons where our sign is, our custom alloy sign and railroad tracks that we're fixing up.
Well, I would make a one hundred or two hundred foot rough from retail business, that entire property.
Well.
Prop's the next level.
Yeah, I mean, and we, I mean, obviously, we could choose to do that. I mean, I, like, but I think the issue comes out is that can we decide, say, simply the entrance way and the first fifty feet or not? I, I don't know.
I don't know either.
Like, because.
Say the different part.
But if it's the park, that park wraps and is the border to all of the other properties on Main Street all the way down to the scouts, basically.
No, it's not.
Uh, yeah, that's fine circuit. There's, I mean, it comes to a point. My point simply being that it then eliminates that half of Main Street. Just, we have to, we have to know that. We're making a decision, we want to know what we're doing at that point.
So here's a, here's a.
Can you just say the corner?
Can I just say one thing? Um, the business zone is very limited. Even the ordinance has it is, which I think is pretty well written and just restricts it to the business zone. Whoever, first of all, we're limiting it to one license in the entire borough, all, just on that little strip of land. If someone has an application that they want to present to us, we could deny it. We could say it's too, you know, too close to the park or, you know, maybe they don't have the right financial plan. We don't really know what's.
No, we can do that if it's not written down somewhere.
Yeah, we're, we, this is not saying anyone can come into Hybridge and open any. This is saying, we, these are our initial guidelines. And I think it's a good place to start because everything's ready to go in the rest of the state. Um, the application still has to come before council.
If people have stipulations in the ordinance saying that they can't, they could easily go to court and say you can't deny it.
They could probably do that right now.
Uh, well, because we have nothing in place.
Because we have nothing in place.
But, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would assume that, as Alan said, that if we do not have something specifying that arbitrarily saying, we don't want, want you to be a disc because we don't like you where it is, and when we didn't specify that that was a bad place in the ordinance, I, I would assume that you could.
That's why I would.
I mean, that'd be my assumption. I don't know that sure Barry could respond to that, I imagine you could.
I would just sleep if having that covered in there. Just to back us up.
Uh, but, but on the other hand, once again, I, also is, you know, you're talking about the entrance. The entire Commons Park is a weird shaped triangle which reaches back behind.
Right, so I.
Main Street and, and basically would encompass all of that half of Main Street.
So you wouldn't have to word it that way.
And once again, you're taking half of Main Street.
Again, there, there's very strict rules about what this thing, the dispensary could look like. Signage, you know, appointments only, uh, parking and simple, they don't even have parking in that spot. So it's, the risk is, again, limited plus, that's a long way from being developed. And my, I, right? I mean, there are people, uh, companies here from Planning Board, Pablo's here. We still haven't seen any kind of application for that site. If I was somebody that's ready to jump on an application, I would look for something that's a little more readily available than that. Tear down.
We don't want retail business at that specific location, corner, adjacent to the park. We should have it.
So maybe we can act on it on later time. I don't think we need to, to give them the moment we have. It's pretty much ready to vote on.
We can't just amend it tonight?
Like, you make that turn of the segment, and then you have to throw up the public hearing and, um, we're still in action. Just like you had the last time based upon the planning board recommendation.
So it's two more weeks.
What, and what, we have to get sent back to planning board?
Yeah, I know, we got to go through all the process advertising.
You know what, you were right. We have to get sent back to planning board for their review for consistency with the venue ordinance first.
Yeah, I think we're, um, again, trying to get down to details of something that might happen to, in the future when we need to focus on what is there right now. We change ordinances all the time. We do. I mean, this one has been, which one was it originally introduced, Adam?
It is, uh, it's.
Yeah, so, again, it's advertising, it's been through planning board twice. I mean, it's, it's good, doesn't it? For what we need right now.
I, I mean, I have to say, I, I don't agree with the idea of just assuming someone's not going to move into that building. I, as a, basically a tear down, as you said, I would imagine that that'd be an easy place to say, oh, good, I'm going to come in, tear it down, build what I want, quickly. Um, so that I would, I would think if someone's.
Look at Borough Hall. I'm still at Borough Hall.
Well, and, and that, but that is a choice. People offered to tear it down and build something and would have done it within a few months. And I mean, that was a very. We were offered quite a bit and chose not to take it because we knew that people wanted to stay in the building. And that was, that was a discussion, we reintroduced the, but either way, that was something that went on for months. And so I'm, I'm not sure I want to bank on it. On the other hand, um, you're right, we can, we can always amend things later or change it in the future if we, if we come up with a better idea. As long as no one else applies for something in the interim, because we can't, can't respond, I assume, change things after someone applies. I would, I think, I think that's right.
Well, the property's already under town that.
Well, exactly, so that, it's unlikely, but I, I don't like banking on that. But at the same time, I also don't like the idea of having a weird convoluted line that squiggles through downtown and says this house in the front and this house in the back and this, not this. That just seems odd to me. If our downtown business district is the only spot and the zoning people said, okay, this is, it'll, it makes sense, then that's it, there's this little rectangle, that's the place. And that's it. And it's, and it's simple and straightforward, that zone's it.
But I think that's.
It seems fair to the business zone town.
Spot zoning is now something covered in, uh, that's kind of what we went through with when we were talking about, um, West Main.
Right, we always have to be careful about spot zoning and that you're not arbitrary or capricious. And the planning board has discussed this a lot. And they did find that the ordinance was consistent with the master plan. But ultimately, it is a policy decision on what conditions you want to punt on this specific use. So as the policymaking entity, you're given pretty wide latitude to punt parameters on any use. But this one, I have to admit, more so than others just because of the way the state legislation was written.
I mean, couldn't you submit that, frankly, raise this as an issue that would protect us in some way?
Raising it as an issue really doesn't protect you. I, I think that, you know, it's not in the ordinance, so, you know, discussion about it doesn't really help you. I think that the real issue is whether, get this in place so you have the protections that are in here right now. If you want to amend it, maybe then amend it and send that amendment to the planning board that they can review it and see whether it's consistent, but they have something in place right now. Or if you want to just keep putting, so, I mean, that's really the choice in my mind, if you want to change it.
And, and I think that is an important consideration. At this point, we've got nothing. We, we've added things to this to add penalties that are fairly clear, I have to say, pretty simple, straightforward. Here are the penalties, here's what you have to abide by, here's what you can't do, here's what we're going to do if you mess up. We've added things like that, uh, that we've altered some things to make it clearer. This at least provides us a framework at the moment so that you don't have to fight things about a lot of things. A lot of things are in there. If we then want to draw a funny thing around that property and see what it hits and decide whether we want it, we can certainly do that. At least we have these other protections in place, and I think that's a very reasonable thing to say as well.
Is it possible just to remove a lot block number?
No, that's, I, well, I, I would prefer, but, you know, that, that just cries out of spot zoning, which is not permitted.
That's exactly what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Right, right. But I know.
Well, it's not the, yeah, and, and, you know, it really would take, you know, some discussion to make sure that it's properly done. And quite frankly, I don't think we're in a position here tonight to have that discussion as to, you know, what can and can't be done, what wouldn't be considered spot zoning, what might. Um, I just don't think we're in a position to do that. That, that's, it takes some, some real discussion, considerations, that's what we want to do.
I would agree. And the other issue that Councilman Strange raises is, is an important one because the Commons is a very odd shaped lot that does run along the western side of the DB zones. And, and, because it has almost, it narrows down to a tail. It, depending on what buffer you decided, you would more than likely eliminate almost all of the lots on the west side of Main Street. And you may have then some lots where the parking lot's prohibited, but the building is permitted to have these because of the way the buffer falls, which I think would be an even more perplexing situation where there's a part of a lot that is permissible and part of a lot that is not. Um, so I, I hear your concern and I would be very hesitant to just pick lots and say, well, they're not allowed. But every other lot in the zone is allowed. And that's, and that's why every ordinance I've seen where they want to preclude, whether it's a dispensary or a cultivation facility, it's always been about a radius around certain, as you say, sensitive areas, whether it be daycare, church, whatever that town deems, um, that they just don't want these types of uses nearby. They put in a radius number and that's in their ordinance.
I think it makes sense to vote on, and, and to, uh, make the commitment to look at, uh, the radius or, or the common area, or, or, or suggestions to the planning board. And hopefully, then, ordinance may be implemented.
I would be comfortable with that.
Any comments for the public?
Yes. Pablo Legala, I need to recircle. So, um, just regarding the ordinance, I just wanted to again share my views. Um, I had a discussion with the board last week at the board meeting, given that when I voted in favor of the current ordinance, I think it's a recommendation, um, was in line with what at the time I thought it was voting for. So I think it was understanding, that's why I had, uh, opinion I had last time. I was actually incorrect, the way the voting went, actually wasn't fact in line with, uh, with the letter. Uh, it was an understanding, I checked what was finally decided. Um, in, in regards to the, to the, the changes and misuse concerns, which is exactly the concerns that I had been discussing during the planning board. Um, I understand the concern about how to do it in a way that is relevant to, um, to the needs that we're requesting, in terms of keeping them away from certain corridors or students or the people that are recreating or, or passing by. Um, I know it gets very difficult and technical. I know there's some things in the ordinance now that talk about the, the forefront has to face. My understanding is by the team, which would be Main Street. And perhaps if you looked at that in consideration with also adding something that said the property cannot abut any recreational, uh, facility, which would be on the trail and the common part of that, instead of establishing a radius, maybe that's another way to work around, address the needs that, uh, that have been requested, remove two properties. I know one of them is, I actually own it, so I know that, there's no discretion, it's not going to go there anytime soon, but there's other ones that are open. And I think this would address some of the concerns about having a dispensary. That's literally where everybody's riding their bikes on Sundays and Saturdays. Kids are going to school, a day to school day, right from the beginning of the end of the commons. And, and you could, you're going in a way that if you reference the, the recreational areas there, which are both the county park and the long trail, then the, the commons, we may address this issue and don't have to be going back and forth, which is mainly what we got.
Hi, I'm Mike Ronzey, West Main Street, Hybridge. Uh, just in the interest of time, I'll just read the comments that I have. Um, so what I have to say may not be, may be contrary to most thoughts on the subject, but I have a right to my opinion and everyone's opinions, opinion matters. Like some of you in this room, I grew up in the just say no generation. And not that long ago, weed was considered a crime and relegated to the ranks of illicit drugs. Somehow, in a very short amount of time, we graduated from calling it weed, cannabis, to relieve the stigma, taking it from where it should be, which is considered a gateway drug, to a mainstream drug and putting it right on Main Street within walking distance of two schools, the very center of town and nearby residential areas. The town is only two square miles, so you're in a residential area pretty much wherever you go for Main Street or in the commercial area. It's something more than normalization of drug use wrapped in a new package called enlightenment and acceptance. Some would say it's the best way to educate young people to take it out of the backstreets and make it more mainstream. You can educate without promoting and making drug use tolerable. Just because it's a way to generate revenue does not make it smart. And just because it's becoming more acceptable by those who want to generate revenue does not mean it's right nor acceptable to everyone. Our younger generation has enough problems without making even more drug use seemingly acceptable. Just because others are following the current narrative doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. I'm hearing that this is such a great thing for Hybridge and we are, uh, setting the trend. Hybridge can be a leader in many ways, but not by passing this ordinance. I've seen some pretty bad decisions in the town over the past thirty years. In my opinion, this could be just one more added to the list. Don't make this a bad decision, just the fact that this is a ten-page ordinance proves that it's controversial. Be representative, representatives that act in the best interest of the residents and not in the best interest of the dollar. Don't let Hybridge become the place to go to get high. Thank you.
Salary award from Salty. I just heard the words about growing up in a time where the words just say no happened. Well, I grew up in it, and it did not work then and it's not going to work now, um, in my opinion. The cannabis issue is a legal issue now in New Jersey. It's legal to do the things that this ordinance is set up to very carefully and specifically achieve. Um, and I believe that the children of today are a lot wiser than the children of my age simply because it's twenty twenty-two and not, I'm not going to say what your average. Long, long time ago. And I believe the kids are wise enough to be able to choose for themselves what, what is right and what is not right. And we've got a great school system, we've got a great teacher right here, who's brought up a lot of the kids here. And I trust you and the teachers to do the best that you can. And I trust the kids to do the best that they can. They go buy the liquor stores, how many of them? And the bars on our main street every day. And that doesn't mean that they're like, oh, let's go do that. That's, I know, it doesn't work, but just say no idea does not work. Um, so I just say, yes, use what you worked very hard over all these months with this ordinance to mold what it is that you all believe is right. And, you know, we're going to stay within the new law. So I'm just saying, I trust the kids, I do.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight.
Move.
Back there.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight.
Move.
Back there.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes, with the hope that we will get an amendment down in the future for the corner.
Four.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
On to public hearings, amend and adopt the budget. One's a quick moment. Motion to open the public hearing on budget resolution. I missed that.
Sorry.
And yeah, uh, motion to open the public hearing on budget resolution zero seven four dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
We have the presentation. Bye-bye. Say, huh, yeah. Twenty-two budget. There you go.
Move.
That's not the one.
I'd say I have to get my glasses off, but I don't have it. My mind is like.
We'll post this on the website.
What's that?
We'll post this on the website.
Oh, yeah.
The twenty twenty-two budget being adopted tonight, total of six million, six million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, compared to a final twenty twenty-one budget of six million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six. Our municipal tax rate has remained flat at one point zero four six. We are within our cap appropriation at two and a half percent with forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars set aside in our cap bank for the future. And despite the pandemic, tax collection rates remain stable with less than a one percent difference prior to year. We are utilizing nine hundred thousand dollars of surplus. Our surplus was regenerated in twenty twenty-one, leaving us an additional two hundred and sixty-nine thousand to utilize to maintain the flat tax rate. Between December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen and January first of twenty twenty-two, current fund surplus has averaged one and a half million while utilizing an average of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Total appropriations broken into departments shows general administration. Total appropriations broken into compartments shows general administration, which you see at the top nine percent. Public safety, which is the ninety percent of red on the right-hand side. PPW, right below that at seven percent. Parks and Rec next to that at seventeen percent on the bottom, which also includes the golf course. And coming back around to green towards the top nineteen percent is our debt payments. In a simpler term, twenty-five percent salary and wages, twenty-four percent is debt and capital expenses, forty-six percent for operating inside and outside of town. Your tax bill has comprised of not only the municipal budget at twenty-four percent, but also local school at fifty percent and regional school at sixteen percent. County budget plus city county open space fund and the library tax comprise the remaining ten percent of the total tax. In comparison, the amount to be raised by taxation support the municipal budget between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two has increased four percent. School levies increased by six point six nine percent over the same period. Adding in the regional high school, appears their introduced budget is up by one point four million. Based on hybrid's percentage of the budget, the increase is approximately three hundred thousand from last year's amount. If you look at that in terms of the tax bill, where there's no increase in the tax rate for the municipal budget, the increase in the tax rate. Resulting from a proposed high school budget would be seven cents. Which equates to approximately a hundred and eighty-one dollars to the other property. This is information I just got today. So this is what I'm showing you. The public hearing on the twenty-two twenty-three budget will be held on board event being on April twenty-sixth at seven P M. The district administration office. A hybrid tax base consists of taxable and exempt properties, and that totals three hundred and seventy-three million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Eighty-three percent of the total tax base is residential. When you take out the exempt properties and just look at the taxable base, which consists of apartment, commercial, industrial. Apartments, vacant land, and residential properties, the residential base represents ninety percent of the taxable portion. Between twenty-one and twenty-two, the taxable base increased by two percent. Vacant land increased by eight percent, residential by one percent, and commercial industrial by thirteen percent. Taxable values have steadily increased from twenty-eighteen to twenty-two, rising over four percent. The average home value in hybrid continues to rise, currently the average home value is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six, up from two twenty-nine, six oh four last year. In twenty-twenty, debt service payment was one million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand. In twenty-twenty-one, the Green Acres loan for acquisition of Lake Solitude at Springside was paid off. This year, the final payment on golf and general group bonds will be paid full, representing about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually in debt payments. So in twenty-twenty-four, you see the annual debt service payment has been reduced to eight hundred and like seven thousand from one million, three hundred and fifty-one. This results in a reduction in debt from nineteen percent of the total appropriation in twenty-twenty-two to fifteen percent in twenty-twenty-four. Looking back, major projects completed in twenty-one, twenty-one consisted of. Finishing Washington Avenue Phase Three. Continuing through River Road Phase One, which also included drainage work. Design work for River Road Phase Two was completed by the Borough Engineers and recently awarded. Drainage work was completed on East Main and Highland Avenue. Phase one of the sewer pump renovations was awarded and is now about ninety-two percent complete. And the well like generator has been installed using pumps available through FEMA from Hurricane Sandy. Approximately forty percent of the water meters have been replaced. The record storage facility, it is up and running on the third bay of the rescue squad building. Union Forge restrooms have been turned into a handicap accessible facility. Swing and Sash were replaced at Union Forge Park with the help of municipal students, and also include a handicap setup. Twenty-two infrastructure projects for streets and roads to include River Road Phase Two, which was recently awarded and set to begin soon. The paving of Highland and East Main. We were waiting for Lisbon Gas to provide some gas hookups to interested owners before beginning, so time is running out, if you want a gas hookup, please call. Lisbon Town as soon as possible. Center Street will be our next roadway to be redone with assistance of the DOT, DOT grant. Design work will be completed in twenty-twenty-two and construction to begin in twenty-twenty-three. Water mains will be be replaced around the middle school, Taylor Prospect, Thomas New, and also the Church Street extension to Mountain Avenue. After replacing the water mains in these areas, the road will be repaved. Water meter replacement will continue, call to make an appointment if yours hasn't been replaced yet. A quarter tower maintenance program will be put into place in compliance with the asset management plan, it was completed in twenty-nineteen. Bundale well improvements, the first of our asset management plan project, is set to have a contract awarded by June thirtieth. This is going to be financed through the NJIV at a favorable rate. Renovations to the sewer pump house will continue with phase two designs. We're involving JCP and L for potential energy savings through the use of qualified equipment sources. And finally, the recycling center doing avenue, we hope to have designs completed and approved for completion of phase one. Good things going on. And just as a side. All right, grants awarded. Grants awarded included sixty-two percent of the estimated cost of Center Street from the NJDOT. All of the design work for sacred school design engineering. Fifty-five percent of the cost of River Road Phase Two is also being covered by NJDOT grant. And the first tranche of local fiscal recovery funds from the federal government will be put toward water main improvements. FEMA has given us preliminary approval for a hazardous mitigation project, showing that the banks have rendered from the top of West Main to the PPW facility with a three-one match. The second round of local fiscal recovery funds due to be received this year will be utilized for additional water main replacements in the Genji up area. Additional grants awarded, DCA recreational grant, which is used for permanent restroom facility in the Commons. Uh sustainable jersey grant for the Commons walkway from Main Street, which is underway. An economic development grant from the county to update outdated sections of various zoning ordinances. A grant from the Jersey Historic Trust to cover plants and specs for replacement of the west porch at Solitude House. And a grant from the Hunter County Historical Committee for the reconstruction of the west porch at Solitude House. Additional applications have also been submitted this year for the reconstruction of the north porch. New Jersey Clean Energy is providing approximately ten thousand dollars for replacement of the third AC unit at the firehouse and also update the lights and switches. And thanks to our communities and volunteers, we were recertified by Sustainable Jersey at the Bronx level for twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-one. All right, so to wrap it up, what's in the twenty-two budget? We have major road improvements, continuing with River Road Two, Center Street design work, repaving the various roads around the middle school. Following the water main replacements. Upgrades to the sewer pump house, upgrades to Bundale well, continuation of the water meter replacement program. Security and safety upgrades to rural buildings, upgrades the HVAC systems, repairing and retaining wall and ramp at the firehouse. Replacement of free PPW vehicles, this vehicle and golf equipment. Uh hiring of replacement personnel for the PPW and police. Continuation of the records management, upkeep and disposal. Technology upgrades, including a new platform based construction permanent program and online mobile trackable forums for the website. And also some new cybersecurity upgrades. And that is it. One final note is that we were recently awarded this pedestrian advocacy award from Hunter County. And we also have a report to show for. Who who posted it on uh online? Oh, it's coming up, okay. Technology upgrades for twenty twenty-four. Before we leave tonight, we might have. I do definitely need a special uh. So I need a moment to go ahead and show counsel.
I just want to thank Bonnie for all the hard work that she did on that.
I can't, I couldn't see a thing, but. Any couple comments?
Salary award consolidated. Bonnie is an amazing person, and I am just so grateful, all the years that you know she's been in this town. She's in a position now where she's saving us a trip with her hard hard work and. No, thank you mayor and council for supporting her and all her great efforts, so I just, we're so lucky here in hybrid, potentially all, so thank you.
I'm Walker, thirty-two, seven, and I have just a couple of observations. Um I noticed that the um cost of the healthcare this year, the actual cost last year was a hundred and eighty thousand. And this year's budget is two hundred and sixty-four thousand, that's a cost of one percent. Utility, water utility salaries are up nineteen percent. Sewer utility salaries are up twenty-one percent. And it's the same for the solid waste, that's of a hundred and twenty-one percent, the solid waste we actually paid last year. And for a solid waste, now we pay eighty-three thousand dollars in salaries for solid waste, that's now sourced out. We also have enough to be raised by taxes, it's a little two thousand, so the tax rate is staying the same with the. Enough to be raised by taxes is going up. Oh, and then I saw on the on the form there, it looks like we're doing NASL over in twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Short comment on any of those salaries.
I'd take the budget as a whole in personnel, water barrel working, various departments, so you all don't have one job, we have between utilities. The utility is sourced out, yes, the solid waste utility, but it is also administratively managed by the barrels, so they're all costs involved.
So each employee might get a different payroll line, if you will, from each of those different budgets.
I I'm right to many court, um I just, you mentioned around the middle school. Um and we had the one meeting a month ago about um Calum Street, was that the one to be redone? Is there was the engineer, you know.
Not in one way, though.
Not to one way, but it's a whole thing that'd be done with.
How 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 far in the future is that coming?
Oh, that's coming soon.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
At the end of the year.
Because it's gotten obviously a lot worse, um and every time it rains, it's it's worse, and so we pretty much have, we've sent it out. It said, you know, the parents not using that at all, so they are going to override, but I just, so it's okay. And I I do appreciate uh everything, thank you. Um I did have another question about the park and um. Is there a possibility, I mean, we we do some legal treaties, is there a way to maybe update the signage at the park and also at the commons? Um to do some work there around the sign, do some plantings and stuff, is there any, might possibly do some of that, Bonnie and I talked today. And I talked to Britt about the the park and doing some things at the fields. But if there's any way to take some money around the signs, the one sign down um at Union Forge, it's getting quite old, it really needs its its rotting basically. Um needs to be repressed, um and the sign, I know I said to you a while ago, and show uh records and plantings around the commons entrance now to really um. To add something to that, so if there's some money that we'd be happy to get, I'm sure environmentally, we have.
Yeah, I feel like there's grant money for new signs, for sure.
Yeah, so for us, going back to Sustainable Jersey, we'd like to do like a phase two. You know, what we're doing at the commons, that's what would be followed up today, so hoping to have something going there, but if we could get something with that that sign and the entrance, I think. I think it would make a big difference.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And Pablo Gallo, I need to circle, and therefore we're asking funds. On the recreational side, I think last week that I asked about um potentially helping out with the infield at the at the middle school, people here in Newport. We did an assessment of what needs to be done, and I think we could, we'll get the volunteers to help out, get the work done. Few things that we can do and uh so maybe just funding recreational budget, um they need new bases in that infield, they're probably, as all of this field has been. Built, um and they're kind of hard and the plant that we even have to so it gets to play on. And the other thing is that I'm not sure what what costed, but over the course of last season to this year, there's missing dirt in infield. I don't know, there were fires, I think I had asked the day, it said fires were maybe done as infield sand. And remove the the dirt along with it, avoiding nails from pallets or whatever being left behind. Well, now we have big holes in the infield that need to be covered, I don't know if we can get the dirt processed, if there's any way to get sand or something delivered and it's something when the when the volunteers get there, we can. Spread it out and give it out everywhere. Right, thank you.
These parks get a lot of use, they really do, I mean, everybody is constantly using them, but we did. Talk about bases, I think last year for all the, I don't know where we got help with that, but um. Any volunteer opportunity, Pablo, you know, we'd be open to, especially where it depends to the middle schoolers who do that field, so. Oh, okay. Okay, for all the fields, can you bring it up?
I'm I'm just talking about.
We're just about the order basis.
All right, so.
Yeah. And uh, you know. Volunteer away.
Where do you get that kind of scent, how does somebody has to be brought special for infield, is that weird?
That's uh.
It's a certain kind of, sure, because I'm.
Certain infield mix I have to get from South Jersey.
Oh, okay, so it's a certain, yeah, okay.
Any other uh public comments or questions? Any other uh top comments or questions? Motion to close the public hearing on budget resolution zero seven four twenty twenty two. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution zero nine eight twenty twenty two, amending the budget.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt budget resolution zero seven four twenty twenty two.
Move.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Okay, we have new discussion items tonight. Introduction of ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one one, purchase of TPW vehicle S three fifty. Motion to introduce the ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one one. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one one shall be published in the express times and are the Hunter County Democrat along with the public hearing date of April fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Onto the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull resolution one oh four twenty twenty two.
Everybody off?
I'd like to pull ninety nine and one hundred.
Why I always get screwed up with this? So we'll.
Motion pulled up.
Motion to pull resolution zero nine nine one hundred and one oh four.
Who?
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sylvester, why don't you pick us up with your nine nine and?
Yeah, sure. On the setup, give butter. Can you just explain how this is going to be used?
Sure. It's a program that um. We were presented with to use by some of the committee members for fundraising platform. Um it's free for us to utilize. Uh what happens is the uh donors. Something would be set up on the screen for the the program that we'd be donating to. The donors would then pay whatever fees are involved when they give their donations. If they choose not to give the fee, the donation that we get is reduced by the amount of that, the the credit card process is.
Can you just give me an example of things before what committee, you're thinking of using this?
Well, with the grounds for um part, if you want them, um the historical commission has also started use of them. So um. Any of the other fundraising lines that we mentioned for this online?
But it's not part of, as you said, about the track of screen. There was a lot of service.
No, no.
And I guess on one hundred, um if you must clear that up, I know we may have a little bit vague trying to get an answer, but I didn't clear that up just a little bit for you. So how do you do the bring in part at the start?
Um by turn this year, we have to actually access you to a new construction permitting program which would allow applicants to apply online. So we have our our application bill online for people to fill out and submit. Uh in order to do that, we're switching to a new program. Hopefully called Go Pilot, which offers not only that portion of the program, but other aspects as well, which would allow us to do the reader uh. More user friendly, billable forms that we have online now. So the forms that we have available online now for landlord registrations and property permits and. Couple of other things would go to this new program. Um what happens now is the program we have is just basically. A glorified billable form program. So it doesn't connect directly with our payment system. So when people make a payment online. Even though they're they're bumped from the application to the payment source A, the two don't connect on the car side. So we always have to go back to the application and the things in the bank to try to mix and match them together. With the Go Pilot program, it integrates with the program we use now so that. The sort of the as close through process for somebody that flies online or a permit, it will automatically accept the payment and automatically issue it for current. Without any intermediate steps and processes. So right now, we're going to start with the construction module. And the landlord registration, working permit, and vacant registration. And we're looking forward with the vacant registration also that we can have to bring your flexibility to be tracked to help with vacant properties that we have in town. And better to enforce to be tracked in time so you're notified or you're catched by and so forth and so on. So. It was a, it's a great program for us. So it's been twenty five thousand for this year. It's a three year contract. So it'd be twenty five for each year. Um we can't add modules after that, depending on type of module we add.
So the system we're using having we have.
Okay.
The uh resolution I pulled is a salary changes. And first, I want to say that our borough has many, many good dedicated employees. Provide our residents necessary services that truly allow our town to function as soon. Want to thank all of them for their service and dedication. Now, I reviewed the salaried wage resolution compared it with the salaried wage resolution from last year. To what what increases in salaries and. On the low end, we have increases in salary of two percent. On the high end, we have salary increases of seventeen percent. We have two people that will be getting two percent increases. One person will be getting four point three percent increase. Two people, they're getting a nine point six percent increase. One person will be getting thirteen point nine percent increase. One person will be getting fourteen point four percent salary increase. One person will be getting sixteen point nine percent salary increase. I'm sure there are various reasons why the increases are what they are. And it's a fairly wide range of salary increases. On the high end, sixteen point nine percent. That's many multiple years of most salaries. And I I don't believe that we should be voting on resolution number four twenty twenty two tonight. Until such a time as Borough Council as a whole. Has a comprehensive plan to address current and future employee compensation. This includes salaries, yearly salary increases, pension benefits, healthcare costs, and especially retiring healthcare costs. Without such a comprehensive plan, we as council people are not performing our fiduciary obligations as elected officials. Taxpayers of type. Or the employees of the borough. Therefore, I move that resolution one oh four two thousand twenty two table until such a time. Borough Council as a whole has developed a comprehensive plan adequately addressed current and future cost toward employee.
Well, let me just say that we have employees that have been here for a long time. Our employee compensation at the borough doesn't change that much. Can you provide details of the sixteen percentage?
Sure.
Cause I'm not aware of Bonnie. Are you aware of um and and we only have a few, so that would stand out a little bit.
I can email you a a list of the phrases that were in this resolution. Uh since we didn't have time to discuss it at our budget meeting. But as far as the.
Well, you and Alan, yes.
Yes, yes. Um I can only associate that with someone whose. Job description has been changed. So there were other jobs put on that line than there were before, which would have counted for the increase.
Well, it's not just sixteen percent increase. There's also fourteen percent increase, thirteen percent increase. It it's not just one. It it varies in range, two percent for two people, up to sixteen percent for one.
Did anyone get more than a two percent increase?
I I I'm aware of about five people that had salary adjustments.
It's it's comparison of salaries two thousand two hundred to two thousand. As far as I know, Apple's.
Give you more detail than the.
With our.
The again, this is a resolution that's been on the consent agenda for many years. We have the same employees the same amount of time.
Exactly.
It does, the numbers don't change. It really don't change that much.
The compensation has to.
Two percent. Is the exceptions to the two percent were were recognized in our discussion?
Okay, I understand that they recognize. As being increased, but there's still increases to someone's salary. You may have a reason for it, but there's still an increase in compensation. And there have been other increases to compensation for borough employees since December of last year. It's a considerable increase in overall compensation for employees.
Okay, I'm I'm believing that. But I don't really think this is a reason to table to make this more complicated than it is. Or has been every year.
I made a motion to table it until such a time to be able to. Make a comprehensive study of employee, total employee salary compensation.
You're suggesting having a like a plan as to in the future, going forward, we intend to do this based on this. We intend to do this based on this.
Correct.
That it's a. At the moment, I I don't think we do, do we? I mean, we just.
Have we ever?
Take things on a case, but I guess.
Have we ever?
We just, we have just added, we just sent chapter forty eight. Incredible, incredible.
That's not true, but let's not. You're talking about.
An incredible increase in cost.
That is not true.
Going forward into the future, we need. Oh my gosh, you interrupt me every time I try to talk about chapter forty eight. And you're absolutely, absolutely wrong.
Excuse me for wanting to correct the language.
Absolutely incorrect. It's an incredible obligation for the town going forward. We're not seeing it this year. We're not likely to see it next year, but over the next ten, fifteen years, this is a financial obligation. Taxpayers in this town are going to have to foot the bill for it. You will not be mayor, doubt you'll be mayor anymore past that point. But we're going to have to deal with it.
Well, what we're talking about tonight is the salaried wages uh resolution that we put on the consent agenda every year and have for many mayors before me and many mayors after you. Many council people, people after you. Um we can have another conversation of chapter forty eight, you and I have a.
This is all part of.
It's not.
This is all part of employee compensation.
We're talking salary and wages. That's it's as simple as that.
That that is correct, but it's all part of employee compensation. And we need a comprehensive plan.
If we have employees left after these.
To address employee compensation, full employee compensation.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's inappropriate to have this conversation about it. I mean, compensation is a part of, you know, I'm compensated for the work I do. Uh and what I get in benefits is part of that and salary is part of that thing else. I mean, that's all my compensation. It's one thing. And typically, when negotiations occur, you take from one, give it to another, and you finally come up with whatever you're going to be paying or what you're going to get. I mean, I I I'm sure it's different in education. I mean, I would, you know, uh I'm I'm.
Did you vote for salary and wages or for compensation that were last year?
Did I vote for it last year? Yes.
Yeah, what about the year before that?
I I voted that as well, although there were time, although there were times when we looked at it and said, and said.
What about the year before that? Yes, 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 yes. We're talking two percent raises.
Well, I will say that there are some numbers that are not two percent, that's for sure.
There are two, two employees that are having a strict two percent increase based on.
Listen, if we're going to talk employee salaries, then we go to executive session and ask for another meeting. So if people really want to table this agenda, I think there's a move, a motion.
Yes, we do have a motion.
That's true.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
I do not want to table that for the next one.
Hughes.
No.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be worth discussing. And maybe it's time where we need to begin having a plan.
Fair.
No.
I don't know.
We may have our.
Oh, okay. I will, I will drop tie. Okay. I I would call my phone.
Well, and can we, can we, at the same time, can we make a proposal or to sit down and come up with it and come up with a plan? I mean.
We'll, we'll talk about. We'll talk about it later. Cause I I think we have to go to executive session. It's embarrassing enough.
Well, the motion that's conceded because the majority did not vote in favor, it was three to three. Um so it did not pass. So now you go back to the original resolution and decide whether or not you want to pass the salaries and wages that's set forth here. And would, and of course, you know, Alan can certainly reserve the right to try to, you know, work to have a more comprehensive plan going forward. You know, that's that's up to the council, whether you want to do that going forward. But now there's a resolution that's on paper.
Well, to to approve or not approve the salaries.
Correct.
But we're still, I think we're still in the discussion.
Now we voted. You voted.
The vote was only whether or not to.
No. To change it. Right, so you're questioning.
So now the now the discussion is whether or not to approve the uh wages and uh salary that's set forth.
Well, if I may say, I really don't think it's appropriate to have employee conversations about individual salaries at a public meeting such.
I think that you're talking about salary lines um as described here and not about individuals.
But there's a clear misunderstanding of.
And if you get, and I think it's, if you certainly could not do that in executive session without notifying the people involved. Uh but I think that you can discuss salary lines and you know what's what's according, what's not. Do mail.
Well, I I mean, and I want to, I want to understand. My understanding was always that as a board of ed, for example, could discuss my employment in public. If they wanted to do it in an executive session, they had to tell me and I had the right to demand that it be done in public.
That is absolutely right.
So that you could always talk about, they can always talk about me in public.
That that is right. As awkward as it may be to talk to, you know, some, yes, that's correct.
As awkward as it might be. But that's, but as an individual, I I don't, I mean, that's a small debt. I mean, everybody knows, you know, you can tell who's talking with the dollar. But we're discussing a a a number, not a person, is what you're saying. We're talking people.
And uh, and I have a question with regards to this resolution. If we don't pass the resolution, will the previous resolution still be effective?
Yeah, the pre, the pre, last year's resolution, salaries would be frozen. Um don't, you know, until such time as you adjust it, if you ever adjust it. Uh but they, none of your employees will be getting any type of increase. Um if he defeats this, if you vote this down. That that's, that's the issue.
And if I may say, I'm uncertain where your numbers are coming from, but my calculation for two percent, except like I said, for. Five, maybe six specific people that had bigger changes in in job titles or other circumstances that led them.
We only have.
Is that, is that also, has have, one thing I would like to ask, I've been looking back over these things each year. So many times, multiple jobs on different lines, on one year in separate places, other years are combined and such and such and such. Um is that a component of these changes this year? Uh movement of lines and things like that.
That's what I'm saying. I think there's a difference that he's finding here. Two percent, I have two percent on it. So I don't know what those numbers are that you're referring to that are so different.
I mean, I can go line by line.
I don't think that's appropriate in public. I would say if it would come to be sooner, I might have been able to go through this.
Well, I mean, you did have a meeting, right? That you had an opportunity to review that.
Yeah, of course. Well, no, I did not have a chance.
Like you mean?
No, um I know that each, I know that each council member outside of the financial, outside of the finance committee met with Bonnie.
This, this document came out on.
This document came out on Tuesday night for the first time.
It's the same as.
Nope.
It was meant to be discussed in our budget meeting, but it was cut short. So we weren't able to go through the salary, which is part of the email that I sent you.
It's literally the same document.
And you mentioned that there are five or six employees where there are adjustments for certain reasons. We only have. We only have seven or eight permanent employees anyway, so five or six with adjustments is a considerable amount.
You say that there's not more differences than two percent than than you were looking at here. Say several more differences.
Would you propose sixteen?
Oh, yeah.
He says there's only two people that were at two percent, so that's wrong.
That's correct. It's, per your document.
Mayor, can I suggest, um based upon my hearing here, that maybe um this um gets tabled to the next meeting
Please.
so that there can be a discussion about these numbers, so that the entire council to be comfortable in terms of what these numbers represent and why things would increase at whatever rates they will increase. Uh so that, because I want the council to be comfortable in terms of the vote, you know, if it's important.
And to to take that a step further, the finance committee did meet with Bonnies for more than an hour and went through these numbers. When salaries came up, I left the room.
We did.
So that this could be discussed without me, so there would be no concern. It's the same resolution on the consent agenda that's on there every year, same employees that we have year after year. Some of whom are taking extra steps to further their career for the, in the event someday we have people that retire. But nonetheless, let's table this, okay? Um voted in office.
No, actually, your motion was far beyond tabling it. It um called for comprehensive study before any wages could, before this could be voted on. Um that, so this would be simply table it from this meeting to the next meeting without any additional language about having to have a comprehensive study before you vote on this. So it's a different motion, in my opinion, that I'm suggesting.
So motion for comprehensive study.
I mean. No, no, that's that's that was defeated already, it's now just a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Okay. Motion to table this to the next meeting, resolution one oh four twenty twenty two.
No.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz. Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Right, uh motion to approve, did we already cover the uh give butter?
Yes.
Okay, re- motion to approve resolution one oh one through one oh three and one oh five through one oh six.
Who?
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Second round of public comments.
Actually, we still need motions to approve uh resolutions ninety nine and hundred.
Oh, I thought I thought we still argued, I'm.
We probably need to. Uh we got Adam from law.
Okay, motion to approve uh resolution ninety nine and one hundred.
Actually, you have to take them separately, mayor and have them pulled out.
Motion to approve resolution zero nine nine.
Who?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Motion to approve resolution one zero zero.
Who?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Okay, couple comments, one minute per person.
Sally Lord, Salathy Village. I am pretty much appalled that we have Alan Schwartz, who's background is ninety nine, right, sir, can you make an answer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um making challenges to financial professionals who have been doing what they do for years and years and years. I just am amazed that you have the audacity to do that, I'm ashamed of you, sorry, thank you.
What what do you, what do you suppose to do, this is a hard job, but.
Karen Spars, CS seven, Robin Lane. I thank you, Alan, and you are educated, and I thank everybody that decided to table it. I think it's right, fully so, if we're gonna have people with added functions, do they need two percent increases as well on those functions? So I think Alan did uh the taxpayers a s- good service and that's what we voted for. So thank you very much for doing your job, and thank you for those who decided to vote on table on this, thank you.
Thank you, we did it on the school board, we can get in here, keeping your eye on our tax dollars, no thank you. Can I just come to the stage for one minute? Okay, uh regarding the uh government pilot, how are you gonna work around the solid seal for the change?
Can you just state the.
Oh, sorry, just trying to check street change. The electronic submissions of permits.
Yeah, apparently that's changing now for the state.
It's statewide, oh, okay, and then the other question I have is, a little bit embarrassed, I've lived in Harvard for fifteen years and after like seeing your really nice display of the budget, which was understandable, so thank you. I had no idea that the the school budget was more of my taxes than the municipal budget, like I had no idea, I'm embarrassed. And I was wondering if there are presentation is, need we to find us that, that I could see where the school dollars are going?
I'm never watching it.
Yeah, the board of ed.
Board of ed website?
I will say that that is the way it is in every single town everywhere, that's, I mean, that's very normal, and every town, seventy, sixty, seventy percent.
It's not.
Oh, I'm not saying it's wrong, oh, I just can't believe I didn't know it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's expensive, we have lots of people to do this.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so right on the board of ed website?
Actually, now it's. If I yell, imagine so.
I guess there's.
Yes, Jean.
Thank you.
Paul Leal, Danny Green Circle, um I just wanna make a comment about the transparency issues and why I think it was a right choice to kinda have this table and we discuss because I was here, I wasn't here actually for chapter forty eight, but I was one of the voices that came after that, talking about how I thought that was passed and there wasn't good transparency for the people. Here's another example, and 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 I know Michelle with, you know, with the issues of potentially conflict of interest and that, I would, I would think you'd be the most supportive of making sure that there's a lot of transparency here because I think overall, you be doing the right thing, people should know that it's been done the right way. And if there's ever a question that is raised about whether there are things that have been done in a way that might not be appropriate, we want it to be out there and and that the council is fully aware of it and people understand it, particularly the public. I I know these are salaries and whatnot, but in the end, I think the public should know that it was looked at by people responsible and and the end, they feel that what was done was fair and and equitable to taxpayers.
Uh Walker and I also just wanted to thank Alan for letting me do the exercise and then find these issues side by side.
I think it's pretty funny because there's some people on this council that have a vested or a, you know, an agenda to make sure that there's as much mistrust as possible.
No.
There was never any conflict of interest, first of all, everybody up here knows that. Uh second of all, we did thirty year projections on chapter forty eight, it's not projected projected to increase payroll costs at all. In fact, our projections.
That's absolutely wrong.
So see, we, this is where I'm talking about, okay? So I'm happy to sit down with you or anybody and go through it. But again, the reason I'm so vocal about it is because there's no conflict and I know what the hell I'm talking about. So it's incredibly frustrating when I have arguments over, you know, accounting, when there's, I'm not a CPA, but there's CPAs who totally disagree with how some people on council want to build these things. And I'm just gonna leave it at that, um because I am embarrassed, uh as a as a business owner, you know, I believe putting our faith and money and investment behind our employees is what takes us further. We want these fields improved, we want the comments done, we want our garbage picked up, we want our brush picked up, our leaves. We want our police to show up if there's a problem, and now we're saying we can't even give them a two percent raise. When was the last time you got a two percent raise, Alan?
I've I have not one, I mean, it's under.
Okay, that's how I'm gonna say it, you're a teacher, okay, so you should be arguing, you should be fighting for your employees that we all come for.
I've been flat on, flat or down, I've gone flat or down, so it's maybe. But I I don't think it's appropriate to insinuate.
No, inside, that was my comment and that's it.
I'm honest, I'm, I don't think it's appropriate to insinuate that people are trying to build mistrust, I don't insist, I don't insist, I don't.
On to what you wish, Barry. You are definitely, you want, you voted on this.
You you tried to let Mr. Strange speak?
No, excuse me, I'm the mayor and I have the power, okay, and that's just the way it is, I'm sorry if that makes sense.
Oh.
Oh, you stopped your comments and I was gonna make my comment.
No, that's it, that's that's the last one, my comments.
And.
Are you. Yeah, I think this is a motion of.
I'm asking my mother.
Council people are allowed to comment until the council votes to end the comments.
Barry. No.
That was the end of the comments and I.
I made a motion.
No.
Well, the rules of order says it says it does, do we have a second or not?
Okay, okay. What was your, what was your motion?
By all means. I said, I made a motion that we continue to allow council to make comments until council decides not to make comments and votes on it.
I second.
So let people talk until council decides not to talk.
You just want to be a talker.
Well, if we made it, there's a motion now and for that does that through uh uh you voted on.
For an act, laws, facts.
I think the motion was to allow the council to renew comments until the council decides um that it's done making comments.
Okay, is council, does council want you vote on whether they're done making comments? Roll call.
Graham.
What exactly am I saying, yes or no?
That we as a council will decide and vote when we're told this discussion is done.
It sounds like something that's already in place, but I suppose I would say that would be something I would endorse, yeah.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
Barry.
Yeah.
I am happy to listen to whatever you would like to say as well, but I would simply like to be able to say what I was gonna say. It's just simply that, I don't think, I don't think I've suggested that there's been any intentional conflict of interest for doing anything nefarious in terms of salaries. I don't. And and I haven't said that, I don't think it's appropriate to suggest that anyone up here is trying to sow mistrust. Alan has always been picking about looking at the numbers of backwards on school board and now, I, so he he's looking at these. I don't have answers to all of these changes, I feel that a lot of them are related to two different line items being combined one year where they were not combined the previous year, and it makes it look like a larger increase than without a person actually getting an increase. But I think that's, that probably accounts for a lot of these changes. But at the same time, I, well, but at the same time, I don't know for sure that that is exactly the case. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to look at them.
I'm gonna explain to you when we sat down, we thought, if you stand with us.
Specific salaries were not discussed on every single point, but things were discussed in general terms, it brings things up, that's true. But actually, the time we vote about it and discuss it in public is when we're supposed to discuss these things. And so having looked at it and looked at it afterwards, and having Alan look through it and bring up ideas, I said, okay, you know, interesting, I'll look at it too. But as I said, making sure that all of us feel comfortable, understand it, doesn't mean that we don't think people deserve compensation or that people shouldn't be getting the appropriate compensation or a raise, that they deserve it, or, you know, whatever it happens to be. I'm not saying that at all, I I've said to everyone who's ever asked me, one of the things I've enjoyed about being on council is I've been amazed to see the commitment that our people workforce and volunteer force have to the town, in every place.
And yet, this is the first time this has been pulled from the agenda.
I I don't know if this is the first time that this has been pulled ever to discuss, I do know that there have been.
I'll tell you that. Who's who's got research, the agendas are up on the on the website through going back to two thousand seventeen. You're not gonna find a single item that you've pulled from the agenda or voted against, up for that matter, by a challenge. Everybody listening?
And still.
It's never been pulled from the agenda, that's all.
I would like to say that this, yes, this resolution is about salaries and salary increases, but it's also about overall compensation for employees of the whole town.
That's indirect.
What did you say, Alan, sorry.
I'm I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that this.
It's about compensation. I didn't hear that.
It's it's about salaries and wages.
I'm saying that this particular resolution is about salary increases.
It's about salaries and wages.
But the salaries, wages and increases. But there is a larger issue when you are discussing salary increases and salaries of overall compensation to each employee. Now, we have voted to provide retiring healthcare benefits to employees of the borough which can and will be and has shown will be a significant increase in compensation for each employee that will be receiving. Not true.
Well, it'll.
My gosh, how can you say?
Because I know what I'm talking about, this is what I'm.
And I do too, it's basic, basic, excuse me.
But you don't. You don't.
I, it is basic mathematics when you provide someone with additional healthcare monies to their, to their compensation. They're receiving additional monies as compensation. It's, if you're saying that they're not receiving additional compensation, that's a disingenuous comment.
Well, that, okay, and that's, and that's, what the situation is going after that is is not directly related to salaries in this instance. Uh I, it is reasonable to think that in the long term, coming up with a balanced approach for both might be reasonable.
That is exactly right, a balanced approach to salaries and overall compensation.
But it isn't, it isn't, but it doesn't, isn't directly related to salaries now.
It it is directly related to salaries.
Well.
It's part of an overall plan.
Not a more. Not a, not a, not a, not a, that's this year.
Mayor, nobody else has anything to say, maybe it's time for a motion to end the discussion by the panel, by the panel.
I'll make the motion, no one has anything to say.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Legalist, Barry.
No, thank you, ma'am.
Not yet.
I'll pass.
Yeah. Communications, Adam.
We have a utility interest moratorium ending March fifteenth, two letters, both in English and Spanish.
Uh onto the bill list.
The total of six hundred eighty two thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars and twenty cents.
Motion to approve the bill list.
No.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yeah.
Well, there's no further business, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Who?
No.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Fair.
Yes.
See you next time.